Good evening, everyone. I call the March the 6th School Board Meeting to order. Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Alfonja?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Gilbor?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to our student rep, Mr. Jonathan Jackson, to lead us in our opening.
Good evening, everyone. I have the great pleasure of introducing Ms. Amaya Cooper, a senior from Bethel High School, to begin and lead our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much, Amaya.
Good evening, everyone. In honor of March being Women's History Month, I will be reading the poem "We Rise" by Amanda Gorman. Today, everyone's eyes are on us as we rise. Today is the day women are paving the way, speaking our truth to power. In this hour, it is our duty to find the brave beauty and rooting for other women so they too know we are not victims, we are victors, the greatest predictors of progress. We press for change, a new dawn drawn into the open by women whose silence is broken. We push on and act on our responsibility to bring visibility to the most vulnerable, to bring freedom to those who didn't have a choice, to bring volume to those who are using their voice. We clear a woman's way, we don't fear the day she steps into the light because we are with her every step of the fight. There's a lot at stake, but making a difference always takes great courage, so we encourage women who dare to stare fear squarely in its face. Women who've always shown that when one woman stands up, she is never alone. We know that when she steps up to right a wrong, she will fight to bring others along to the network, into the conversation, working together to change communities and nations for generations. Our world made all the stronger, the longer women are able to sit at the table. It is her strength, her story, and her spirit which inspires other vital voices to speak up when they hear it. So let it be said that light will be shed when our world is led by leaders ahead of the headlines, the voices who are first on the front line, these women who stand up, knowing the wind not by where it is, but where it is blowing. Leading worlds not by how society is, but where change is going. We all leap forward when one woman tries, when she defies with her rallying cries, here lies but does not rest the best of tested women who call us all to rise. Speaking the truth in this finest hour, that to their own power, every single woman is entitled, but it is how they empower us that makes a woman's voice so vital. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amaya. I really liked how that poem really spoke on the support and the empowerment of women as we focus on this Women's History Month. That was a really very, very powerful poem. I just have a couple of questions for you. Number one, what are your future plans?
So after I graduate from high school, I plan to go to college on an Army ROTC scholarship and major in biology, so that way I can become a physician assistant.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you so much. Second question for you, what extracurriculars do you participate in?
So I'm on the track team at Bethel, and I'm also heavily involved in extracurriculars with ROTC, so I'm on the drill team and I'm on the honor guard as well.
And I know you do very well in our JROTC team. Another question for you, what is your favorite subject that you study at school?
My favorite subject is calculus, as crazy as that sounds.
Got you, got you, got you. Calculus, calculus. All righty, and who all do you have here to support you today?
So I have my mom, my dad, my sister, my grandmother, and my nana, and then I have my Bethel family here, so I have Dr. Howard, Ms. Pace Pierce, Ms. Poole, I have Mr. McGray as well. Am I leaving anybody out? And Ms. Emery, I'm sorry, Ms. Emery. I'm sorry. That's everyone I have.
All righty, it definitely seems like you have very strong and talented people who are here to support you on your journey. Thank you so much, Amaya. It really pleasured be to see another brewing here at our school board meeting.
Thank you.
If I would, I would like to turn it back over to our school board for any comments.
All right, thank you so much, Jonathan. Amaya, come back to, come, come, come on back up here. I just want to give board members an opportunity to, to speak or share any words that you have with Amaya, but I also want to acknowledge the fact that Amaya was here back in fifth grade doing the same thing and meeting us once again. So how cool is that to come back, your senior year, and as a full circle moment, so thank you again for sharing her with us. Any comments from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask Amaya if you could have your family members and your Bethel family members stand and be recognized on camera.
Okay, well, okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item 1.03, the adoption of tonight's agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Kilgore?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the agenda as presented with the following amendment, to add action item 6.08 to address the social media mass action suit.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's agenda with the addition of item 6.08 to the agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is recognitions, and so I will turn it over to Ms. Kilgore.
Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Dr. Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, members of the Hampton City Schools family. At this time, I'd ask Mr. Samuels to please proceed to the microphone on the stage to assist with tonight's recognitions. So it is our pleasure to recognize a special group of educators this evening, our National Board Certified Teachers. Through National Board Certification, teachers demonstrate that their teaching meets the profession's standards for accomplished practice through a rigorous, peer-reviewed, and performance-based process, similar to professional certification in fields such as medicine. In achieving Board Certification, teachers prove their ability to advance student learning and achievement, which is certainly what we like here in Hampton City Schools. So National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. While teacher licensure systems set the basic requirements to teach in each state, completion of the National Board Certification signifies that teachers have voluntarily, I'm gonna say that again, voluntarily, gone much further. National Board Certified Teachers have developed and demonstrated the advanced knowledge, skills, and practices required of an outstanding educator. This year, we are proud to recognize three Hampton City School teachers who have earned their National Board Certifications for the first time. So please join me on the floor as I call your name. We have Dr. Sheila Barnhart Ramirez, who is a school counselor at Langley Elementary School, and you can definitely clap. If you would join me right down here by the podium, we're gonna let the board take a look at you while I brag on you for a little bit. Ms. Jen Williams, I don't believe she is here, but she is a kindergarten teacher at Mary Peak Elementary School, so let's give her a round of applause. And we have Mr. Jesse Reese, a pre-K through five art teacher at Phoenix Pre-K through eight school, if you would join me down front. So in addition to the two professionals standing before us who are newly certified, we are proud to recognize one staff member who has earned her renewal certification. So with Lindsay McCabe, please join me up front by the podium. All right, it's my turn to brag on them a little bit before I let Mr. Samuels call them up front. So I'm gonna begin with Dr. Sheila Barnhart Ramirez. She is a seasoned school counselor with two decades of experience. She is a product of Hampton City Schools and holds a master's in school counseling from Old Dominion University and a doctorate in community care and counseling from Liberty University. Dr. Barnhart Ramirez's commitment to creating a supportive environment for LGBTQ plus students is evident through her establishment of the Unity Club at Kilgore Gifted Center. Additionally, she's a registered play therapist and internationally credentialed sand tray therapist, did I say that correct? Perfect, and actively sharing her knowledge through presentations on topics such as LGBTQ plus support, behavior management, anxiety, and the significance of play. And I know that Ms. Williams is not with us, but I would like to just share a little bit about her, especially since it's on camera. Ms. Jen Williams, who is our seventh, her seventh year teaching, all of which have been with Hampton City Schools, she has a passion for teaching in Title I schools and lives by the motto, kindergarten for life. She has served as a curriculum writer, mentor, and climate coach. Our third newly certified teacher is Mr. Jesse Reese, who is a transplant from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and as a Pittsburgh girl, I was born there. Go Steelers! And sorry, back to you. All right, so he graduated from Penn State with his bachelor's in art education and has 15 years of experience in the child development field. He is currently in his seventh year with Hampton City Schools and is pursuing his master's in illustration at Savannah College of Art and Design. So let's give these two educators a big round of applause. And then I'm gonna recognize Lindsay McCabe, who is just recertified, which is also extremely difficult. So Ms. McCabe received her Maintenance of National Board Certification in December of 2023. She is in her seventh year of teaching for Hampton City Schools as a middle school special educator and instructional leader right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. Ms. McCabe has her bachelor's degree in education and English from Hofstra University and her master's degree in English with an advanced certificate in teaching and writing from Stony Brook University. She is currently working on her PhD in special education at the University of Northern Colorado with a focus in special education. So let's give Ms. McCabe, Ms. McCabe a big round of applause as well. And now, Mr. Samuels, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. Would you all please join me onstage by the microphone? And if you saw earlier I was wearing a mask, it's because of my sinus. It's that time of the year and my allergies acting up. It's okay. Before I present each of you with a certificate of recognition, I would like to say that we know the rigorous process to become a National Board Certified Teacher is no simple task. It certainly takes a great deal of time and effort to accomplish. We thank each of you for pushing yourself professionally to ultimately advance student learning and achievement for our Hampton City School students. So without further ado, on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept these certificates of recognition for your outstanding accomplishments. And I will start with Dr. Sheila Barnhart Ramirez, and it says certificate of achievement from Hampton City School Board. Congratulations, this is, this certificate is proudly presented to Dr. Sheila Barnhart Ramirez, Langley Elementary School, National Board Certified Teacher, and it is signed by our Superintendent Dr. Haynes and our Chairman, Dr. Mason. So the second, Lindsay Matt Gabe, certificate of achievement from the Hampton City School Board, congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Lindsay Matt Gabe, Jones Magnet Middle School, National Board Certified Teacher, renewal, and once again, it is signed by Dr. Haynes and our Chairman, Richard Mason, Dr. Richard Mason. But last, but not least, you know, we have to introduce the ladies first. Jesse Reese, certificate of achievement from Hampton City School Board, congratulations, congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Jesse Reese, Phoenix Pre-K aid, National Board Certified Teacher, and once again, it's signed by our Superintendent Dr. Haynes and our Board Chairman, Dr. Richard Mason. In addition to that, we also have some coins that we would like to present to each recipient. It's the Hampton School Board Coin, and I think they're somewhat valuable.
Don't, don't try to spend them at a store, though.
So you may want to keep a hold on these. So once again, let's give this exceptional group of educators another big round of applause. Before you take your seat, we would like to recognize the important guests in our audience tonight who are here supporting you. Would any family members, fellow teachers, or administrators of the board, of the National Board Certified Teachers who are in, in the audience, please stand to be recognized? And I see she is standing so proudly, and she already stood. Dr. Kim Richards, please stand and once again be recognized. Dr. Richardson is Hampton City School, School Director of Induction and Development, who also oversees the National Board Certified Teacher Program and is a huge support to our teachers. We thank you for the work that you do, and please join me once again in another round of applause to recognize our special guests and to congratulate our newest Board Certified Teachers, as well our teachers who earned their certifications, recertifications, I should say. Thank you so much for sharing yourself with our Hampton City School students. It means a lot to us as you advance your career in earning your certification, and turn it over now to Ms. Kilgore.
And I did promise Mr. Reese he did not have to speak, so thank you all for coming out tonight. We appreciate it. And Chair Mason, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And I do want to recognize Councilman Chris Bowman is with us tonight, so thank you so much, Councilman Bowman, for joining us. And so moving along with tonight's agenda, item number three, the consent agenda, 3.01, Personnel Report 2024-4. 3.02, School Board Consent of Receipt of Donations on March of 2024. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as, again, a point of clarification and making sure the public understands, anytime the school division receives a donation of valued at $500 or more, whether it's a school or school division, this board must accept the approval of it.
Thank you. Any other items for discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Item number four, Superintendent Staff Reports, and it is my pleasure to certainly turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Raymond Haynes.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the board, teacher staff, and the Hampton community. At this time, I'm going to go down to the podium and present the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2425 under the mantra of One Community, One Transformation, Excellence Good evening again, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the school board, teachers, staff, students, and the Hampton community. Tonight, it is my pleasure to present an overview of the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for the upcoming school year, fiscal year 2425. This proposed budget has been developed to support the school board's continued focus on competitive compensation, teacher recruitment and retention, and a commitment to creating a safe and nurturing school environment. As such, the proposed budget supports the Hampton City Schools' strategic plan and is aligned with our Division's mantra of One Community, One Transformation, Excellence with Intentionality. Additionally, within this proposal, is funding to move away, additionally, within this proposal, is funding to move away from contracted services or contracted employees for custodial services and bring back this key function of our school operation in-house, thus employing our own custodians on a full-time basis. Now, before moving forward with this presentation, I certainly would like to thank and recognize each school board member for your level of commitment and involvement. Your questions and input throughout the budget process have greatly assisted our team in preparing this budget, and I wanted the community to know their efforts on your behalf. Additionally, I would like to thank the City of Hampton for the strong collaborative partnership that has been built over the years and continues today. City Manager Mary Bunting, Mayor Donnie Tuck, and all of the city council members are truly champions of this school division. Our students, staff, and families certainly benefit from their ongoing support and active involvement, and it is important to note that this proposed balanced budget is also possible because of the city's continued investment in our schools and the ongoing collaborative working relationship with the school board. So, taking a look at the budget at a glance, the proposed budget includes funding for a 2% compensation increase. It is important to note that the proposed budget for our school division is based on the governor's proposed budget and not a final state-approved budget. We are currently awaiting word from Richmond in regards to final General Assembly action, and as such, and true to the school board's commitment to its priorities, this budget includes a 2% raise versus the 1% bonus payment that is included in the governor's proposed budget. It will be important for our division to remain competitive, especially when it comes to teacher recruitment and retention. It is also important to keep in mind that a bonus is a one-time compensation. This means that it is not sustained into future years, whereas a raise is an increase to employee's base salary or hourly rate. Therefore, it has a lasting impact. The 2% will be a part of an employee's salary next year and each subsequent year after that. Additionally, a raise increases an employee's Virginia retirement system benefits, and a bonus does not. So, the proposed budget also includes an increase in the minimum wage to $14 an hour, as well as additional investments in special education instructional programs. In particular, additional instructional assistance in teacher positions will be provided to support our students with disabilities based on students' individualized needs. Other proposed investments include, but are not limited, limited to, additional funding to absorb projected increase in employee health insurance premiums for next school year. As noted previously, staff recruitment and retention remains a top priority for our school division. So, by absorbing any increase in the cost of insurance for our employees next school year, they will fully realize a raise as opposed to having higher insurance premiums cut into their compensation increase. For the remainder of this presentation, I will provide a more detailed review of the proposed spending and investment plan by major funds for fiscal year 2425. So, let's begin by taking a look at the process used to develop our budget. Our division continues to take a systems approach to resource allocation and management to ensure alignment with our long-range strategic plan goals and priorities. Therefore, the budget development process that has brought us to this presentation is organized into five distinct phases that include planning, data collection, review and presentations, approvals, and closeout of the budget. Between October and November, each department submits its budget requests for review and funding consideration for the Division's Budget Committee, or by the Division's Budget Committee. During the month of January, state revenue projections are developed and finalized based on the governor's proposed budget, which is officially titled the Governor's Introduced Biennial Budget. So during January, we also received the state's projection of the school division's average daily membership, otherwise referred to as our total projected enrollment for all students in grades K through 12. The projected average daily membership is an important figure because it serves as the primary basis for the state's distribution of funds, specifically those funds that are received on a per pupil basis. So throughout the months of January and February, the Budget Committee met weekly to review and prioritize budget requests. During these meetings, we were pleased to have Assistant City Manager Brian DeProffio in attendance. Also during these meetings, I, I, along with members of my team, conducted meetings with school board members as well as city council members. These meetings, which we refer to as two-by-two buddy meetings, allow myself and members of the team to engage in conversations about such things as student enrollment projections, possible expenditure pressures for the upcoming school year, as well as revenue projections. These meetings are an integral part of the process, and I certainly would like to thank each school board member again, the city manager, and each city council member for the time dedicated and their level of engagement in the process. So again, this five-month process has brought us to this point this evening, and following this presentation, the school board will conduct a series of public hearings and work sessions on the proposed budget, leading to the school board's scheduled approval of the budget on March 27, 2024. Immediately following the March 27th meeting, the board's approved budget will be submitted to the city manager, will be submitted to City Manager Bunting, followed by a formal presentation by the city council for deliberation and subsequent appropriation. So the last phase of the process is the final upload of the approved budget, with any final adjustments being made by the end of June 2024. Budget requests and proposed decisions regarding the budget will analyze through the lens of the strategic focus model on how funding investments advance the division's goals. Additionally, the school board identified goals and priorities for the upcoming school year that also align with the, with the division's strategic plan. So, the school board's priorities influencing this funding plan are as follows. A continued focus on student achievement in the Academies of Hampton Master Plan 2.0, which both fall under the goal area of maximizing every child's learning. A continued emphasis on competitive compensation- A continued emphasis on competitive compensation for teachers and support staff, as well as teacher and staff recruitment and retention, all of which fall under the goal area of attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff. And lastly, an ongoing emphasis on school safety measures, as well as the continued expansion of the division's middle school sports programs, both which fall under the goal area of create safe and nurturing schools. The proposed budget is organized into seven separate funds, with the single largest being the School General Operating Fund, otherwise known as Fund Fifty. Combined, all seven funds total three hundred forty-eight point three million dollars. At this point, I will provide an overview of all budgeted funds, beginning with a more detailed review of the proposed operating fund budget. So as I shared earlier, it is important to note that the proposed budget presented this evening is based on Governor Yonkin's Introduced Biennial Budget that was released in December twenty-two, twenty-three. We do expect changes to the governor's proposed budget based on final general assembly action. The proposed operating fund for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five totals two hundred eighty-seven million ninety-six thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars, representing an increase of twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars, or one one-hundredth of a percent over the current year's budget. So operating budget revenues are budgeted by major categories and are noted on this particular slide. So as you can see, we are projecting a decrease in some categories, like state funds, while others will increase, like the local contribution. So two of the main drivers of state funding for school divisions are the local composite index and the March thirty-one average daily membership. The local composite index, or some often refer to it as the LCI, is a number that is calculated every two years and is utilized by the state to determine a locality's ability to pay for its share of education costs related to the state's standards of quality, or SOQ. The average daily membership, or ADM, is a projection of the average number of students that will be enrolled in a school division between the start of school and March thirty-first. For fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, our ADM is projected to be eighteen thousand eight hundred fourteen students. The total projected state revenue is one hundred eighty-six point nine million dollars, representing a decrease of approximately two million dollars, or one point zero four percent. This projected decrease is attributed to the elimination of several one-time state funding sources in the current year, combined with a slight decline in projected student enrollment for school year twenty-four, twenty-five. The budget comprises four different categories or programs of state revenue as follows. Standards of Quality, State Sales Tax, Lottery Funded Programs, and State Incentive and Categorical Programs. So as I shared previously, the city of Hampton and Hampton City Schools collaborated throughout the budget development process. The proposed budget includes a local contribution in the amount of ninety-three point one million dollars, representing a baseline increase of one point two million dollars, or one point four percent. Local funds represent the second-largest funding source of the school operating budget and are received from the city of Hampton based on a funding formula that provides Hampton City Schools with sixty-one point eight-three percent of residential, personal property, and utility tax revenues. It is important to note that this current estimate represents a preliminary baseline contribution pending final appropriation action of the city council. As I shared earlier in the presentation, we are anticipating federal revenue in the amount of seven hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Other miscellaneous revenue is projected to be six point three million dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and includes all remaining funding sources which do not fall under state, federal, or local funds. The four largest sources in this area are noted on this slide, so I would like to highlight the two point six million dollars of revenue that is generated by our on-site pharmacy center, which continues to be a wonderful benefit and resource to our employees. So as this proposed budget is balanced, estimated operating expenditures for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five also total two hundred eighty-seven point one million dollars. The total proposed school operating expenditure budget presented this evening is allocated to eleven major state expenditure options, including salary-infringed benefits, which represent seventy-seven percent of the total budget. Additionally, a ten point eight million dollar net reduction in non-payroll expenditures is comprised of the following. Reallocation of ten point two million dollars of one-time all-end Virginia funding to fund sixty reimbursable projects. Resetting the contingency budget to two million dollars as we look to reallocate funds that were set aside last year in contingencies less than the burden of the loss of pandemic-related funding that ends in September twenty-two, twenty-four. Reallocation of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in Virginia Public School Authority, or VPSA, technology funding to fund sixty reimbursable projects. Reduction of contingency for one-time costs associated with the purchase and installation of traffic warning and flashing signs for schools. Miscellaneous increases to New Horizons Regional Program, utilities, city charges, and Fund Ninety-four Athletics. So as I shared in my opening comments this evening, this proposal also includes an additional five point six million dollars to improve custodial services across the division. With the pending expiration of our existing contract for custodial services, the division went out to bid again this school year. The costs associated with these bids were significantly higher, due in large part to increased labor costs and inflation for supplies and materials. As the board is well aware, in recent years, the projected costs of bringing back custodians in-house were notably higher than contracted services. However, due to the significant increase in the bids for outsourcing, it is now financially reasonable to employ our own full-time custodians. The costs estimated to do so are slightly higher than the five point six million dollars. However, we know from experience the value added when custodians are direct employees of a school division. As with most school systems, personnel-infringed benefits represent the largest expenditure investment of funds during any given fiscal year. This proposal invests and allocates nearly seventy-seven percent, or two hundred twenty million dollars, to attract and retain a highly competent, committed, and effective staff for the upcoming school year. Maintaining competitive salary and benefits for our staff continues to be a top priority of the school board. As such, a two percent salary increase is proposed for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, costing three point eight million dollars. Additionally, you will note an expenditure increase on this slide of three point six million dollars, which is associated with the two percent raised at all staff received near the middle of this current school year. While approximately half of this cost was incurred this school year, we wanted to be sure to reflect this, reflect in this presentation, the cost of this recurring expense moving forward. As noted previously, this proposal also includes an additional investment of one point six million dollars in the division's self-insurance health fund to absorb the projected increases in staff premiums. And lastly, under the proposed expenditure increases, you will note a one point four million dollar cost associated with staffing changes. With an additional two percent salary investment, employee gross salaries will have increased by at least, by at least thirty-one percent since twenty-seventeen. It is also important to note that typically, we have seen insurance, health insurance increases each year around four to six percent. Next year, health insurance coverage is increasing substantially, a twenty-one percent increase, a twenty-one percent increase. However, I am pleased to report that in this budget proposal, there will be no increase, there will be no increase to employee contribution rates for healthcare. Hampton City Schools will be absorbing this increase in costs for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year in order to provide our staff a full two percent compensation increase. We have made this a focus over the past several years so that staff have received a full compensation increase each year since twenty-nineteen. Again, we see this ongoing investment in staff as an essential component to our continued success as a school division, and certainly thank the board for its continued support and focus on compensation over this period of time. Other compensation recommendations are noted on this screen. One I would like to highlight is related to our sports programs. We are looking to add stipends for esports coordinators at the high school level and the addition of track and cheer programs at the middle school. Esports, short for electronic sports, is recognized under the Virginia High School League. This sport is a form of competitive, of competition using video games, and has proven to offer lucrative job and scholarship opportunities for our young people. The addition of track and cheer at the middle school is part of the continued expansion of intramural sports. The proposed budget includes a net increase of thirty-one point two positions within the school operating fund, or Fund Fifty. As mentioned earlier, the majority of these positions are in the area of special education. At this point in the presentation, we will turn our attention to the division's five special revenue funds, including the following. Food and Nutrition Services, reimbursable projects, rental income, student activity, and athletics. The proposed budget for the Food and Nutrition Services Fund for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five totals seventeen point one million dollars, representing an increase of nine hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, or five point eight percent over the current year budget. The projected revenues are based in large part on a projection of meals to be served during the current year. We are also proud to continue to be able to provide all of our students breakfast and lunch at no charge through our participation in USDA's Community Eligibility Provision Program, or CEP. Projected expenditures include funding for a two percent salary increase for program employees, as well as absorbing increases in employee health insurance premiums. The proposed budget also includes the use of one point eight million dollars of the program's accumulated fund balance from previous school years, as required by the Virginia Department of Education. An increase in materials and supplies, such as food costs, are projected to increase due to inflation. The next special revenue fund is the reimbursable projects fund, or Fund Sixty, which is used to account for projects that are one hundred percent self-supporting and include all grants awarded to the school division. The budget proposal for Fund Sixty is based on the continued funding of current grant programs, plus projected carryforward funds at the end of this school year. So the total proposed budget for Fund Sixty is forty-one point five million dollars, and this represents a decrease of thirteen point, thirteen point four million dollars when compared to the fiscal year twenty-four original budget. This decrease is due primarily to the final closeout of federal pandemic relief grants. The total proposed reimbursable projects expenditure budget presented this evening is allocated by the same major expenditure object types as approved by the state. Projected expenditures include funding for a two percent salary for program employees, as well as absorbing increase in employee health insurance premiums. As the board and community are well aware, school divisions throughout the country have received a great deal of additional funding from the federal government in recent years. Uses of pandemic relief funds for our school division have included such, have included items such as HVAC and window replacement, as well as roof, roof projects. The next fund is the Fund Sixty-Five Rental Income Fund, which is used to account for activity associated with rental spaces within the school division. Examples are the use of Mallory Elementary School and the Mary Peake Center that are rented out by local and community organizations. Rental expenditures are allocated for repairs and maintenance and utility costs at rental locations. You can see that we are projecting a decrease for this expenditure item. So the next special revenue fund is Fund Ninety-Three Student Activity. The Student Activity Fund represents the total individual school bank accounts, which hold all funds generated at the school through activities such as student club dues, activity fees, fundraisers, donations, faculty dues, picture and yearbook sales, and school store sales. The projected total budget for next school year is nine hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred thirty dollars. Under athletics, this fund includes all revenue and expenditures associated with the sports programs across the division. The fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget is approximately nine hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars, and is one hundred ninety thousand dollars higher when compared to this current fiscal year's budget. Revenues are primarily received from ticket sales and from the division's school operating fund. The increase to the athletics budget supports the expansion of the middle school sports program, which next school year will include track and cheer. The feedback from students, families, and staff regarding this initiative have been, has been simply remarkable. Other increases in the budget are to account for projected changes in game day expenses, staff officials, staff, I'm sorry, officials, security and rentals, and increases to athletic insurance. The Hampton City Schools' Instructional Resource Toolkit was established in twenty-two, to enable other school divisions in Virginia to obtain access to a variety of HCS-created instructional resources and training protocols on a fee basis. Because of the nature and structure of this professional service operation, this fund is accounted for as a business enterprise. An example of this service is the sharing of our guaranteed enviable curriculum on a subscription basis. Currently, we have over twenty school divisions in and outside of Virginia that are subscribing to our curriculum, which is, which was designed and created by our staff members. The increase in the enterprise budget is due to a projected increase in the number of partnerships with other school divisions. Revenues are generated through fees charged to external customers and does not include local taxpayer dollars from the city of Hampton. The total projected revenue and sales for next fiscal year is five hundred seven thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. The General Assembly is scheduled to adjourn on March ninth, twenty-two, twenty-four. We will continue to monitor the ongoing budget work in Richmond, and will await final actions of the General Assembly. We know these final actions will result in changes that will need to be made to the division's budget, and we will be prepared to make the recommended changes to the board when the time comes. As noted on this slide, we have listed the dates for the upcoming school board public hearings as part of the budget process, as well as the date of March twenty-seventh, for when the board is scheduled to vote on the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I would like to conclude this presentation by giving a special thanks, not only to our Hampton School Board, our city manager and city council, but also to our division leadership team, Human Resources Department, Food and Nutrition Services, Athletics, department heads, principals, and our secretaries and administrative assistants. I would also like to give an extra special thanks to Ms. Brittany Branch, our Chief Financial Officer, for taking a systems approach for establishing our budget development processes and procedures, as well as Dr. Michael Thornton, who has stepped in as our interim Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Ashley Ranger, Ms. Lisa Dean-Hafer, and Ms. Leann Moore, and other members of the Finance Department. These departments and individuals are to be commended for their hard work around this balanced budget presented this evening. This concludes my presentation, board members. At this time, I certainly entertain any comments, questions, or need for clarification.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Haynes. Any comments or questions from board members? Ms. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Haynes, first of all, thank you for a very comprehensive, thoughtful, and balanced budget. And I use the word thoughtful because as you- And I use the word thoughtful because as you glean through this budget, you can see that a lot has gone into making sure we do what is right for our students and our staff. Whether we're talking about what we're looking at with custodial services or the addition of track and cheer at the middle school or continuing our sign-on bonuses, it's a thoughtful, balanced budget, and I can tell you how much I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do have a question, and you talked about the local funds. You said you used preliminary baseline contributions pending allocation approvals by council. And we talked about the General Assembly, I think adjourned on March ninth. There could be some adjustments?
Yes, ma'am.
And we won't know until later?
Yes.
So my question to you and your staff really is, if we find ourselves with additional funds, which we did not anticipate, what's the plan for those funds, if I may ask?
That's a great question, Ms. Cherry. We will continue to focus on the board's priorities of competitive compensation, looking at the pay raise increase as well as efforts to attract and retain exceptional staff and looking at the teacher pay scales, and then some other efforts and initiatives based on the school board's priorities. But the main focus would be on the competitive salaries and the teacher recruitment and retention aspect of the work.
So we still be looking at human capital?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Kilgore?
Just want to say, great presentation.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that, and glad this slide is still up because I think I, I want to say that especially for the folks that are involved with development of this budget, one of the things that's not shown is that this is developed based on a, a long-term vision. We were very strategic in how we used ESSR funds, how we set things aside, so that when we got to this point where we knew ESSR funds were going away, we don't have to see some of the pain that other divisions across the Commonwealth are seeing. So there's a lot of thought that goes into this, and I just want to say thank you and very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
Anyone else? Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Dr. Haynes, a wonderful presentation, very clear and precise. I do want to highlight the section on the budget at a glance, the no increase to employees' healthcare premium. I think that's an advantage to our school division, a school division that's picking up the premium, the insurance premium for the employees is advantageous to us.
Yes, sir.
To keep, you know, employees, you know, teachers and staff on, for our school division. One of the things that I really want to say is that cost for employees' insurance now is extremely high. And can you share with us, my question, can you share with us approximately the cost to the school division that this is the insurance premiums are costing our school division?
Approximately twenty-four and a half million dollars.
Somebody cut me off?
You got a preacher up here.
So that's, that is an advantage for us that we, you know, work with our employees, that they can enjoy the full enjoyment of the raise that they are receiving.
Yes, sir.
And so I think that's a plus for us at the school division. A lot of other school divisions are not doing that. The employees have to take the blood of the insurance.
Right.
Premiums going up, they have to pay for that themselves, so kudos to you all.
Thank you, sir. We've been intentional in doing that since, I believe, 2019. So when we're talking about giving a compensation increase, it is indeed an increase when they look into their actual, to their actual paychecks.
Yeah, I'm glad that we can continue to do that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Anyone else? Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Chairman Mason. Although I'm not feeling well, my sinus and my, experienced sinus, I had to be here today, Dr. Haynes, to support this budget because I think this budget is well-presented.
Thank you.
It's a collaborative budget that includes city council. And one other thing that I'd like to highlight in the budget is the creation of safe and nurturing schools and the expansion of the sport programs, how important it is to support the initiative of the city of Hampton to reduce the number of our young people being involved in activities, you know, juvenile criminal activities after school. And this expansion allows our student to remain in our building with adequate supervision to ensure that they're not engaging those activities. So I just want to applaud you and your staff to support this initiative, which also aligns with the city of Hampton initiative also.
Thank you, sir. Lot of positive feedback from the schools in regards to our young people recognizing the importance of staying focused on the grades, coming to school on time, staying out of trouble, making good choices, and we're seeing a lot of positive feedback, are getting a lot of positive feedback from city officials as well, so it's a win-win on all aspects.
Anyone? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Haynes, thank you so much for such an impactful proposed budget. Thank everyone that's been involved with this process. As board members, we have thoroughly dissected this budget, and I appreciate you answering all those intricate questions that we had along the way leading up to this. I'm just grateful and I appreciate such a comprehensive and well-prepared budget, sir.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Fonge? How did I know you were going to be next?
I'd be remiss not to comment. Excellent presentation, Dr. Haynes. Of course, we've heard it, not this exact presentation, but we, like Dr. Banks Gray said, we've been over this budget multiple times now, and so it's not anything new that we're hearing, but always refreshing and, and extremely pleasing to hear everything that we've done to add to the instruction, instructors for our schools, and you mentioned specifically in the areas of special education, I think is very, very notable.
Thank you.
And so I'm glad to see that amongst all of the other wonderful items that have been added to the, to help our division to move forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is an outstanding budget, and, and it's a comprehensive budget. When we look at the thought of our custodians coming back in-house, because we know that every aspect and every employee who have an opportunity to touch our children are very important to us, and so we really have to look at all of what we're doing within Hampton City Schools, and I feel as if this budget is actually doing that. So kudos to Dr. Haynes and, and the finance team and everyone who had something to do with this budget. And also thank you to my fellow board members for all of the hard work and, and setting the priorities and, and putting those things in place and, and meeting with our two-by-twos and our constant calls to, to Dr. Haynes. Y'all may not know, but he was starting to grow hair until we got into this budget season.
All went away.
But I, I certainly would be remiss if I, I don't thank city council and, and Mary Bunting, because we do work very collaboratively together when we begin this process of putting this budget together, and we're very fortunate and blessed to be in the city of Hampton because a lot of our other cities don't have this type of relationship, and they don't have that commitment to education, and they don't have the ability to put children above self when it comes to what's going on. And so I'm proud to be a citizen of Hampton where we put teaching and learning first, and we continue to do it with excellence and intentionality. So kudos to the city of Hampton, Dr. Haynes, and Hampton City Schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And so while Dr. Haynes takes his time getting back up here. Yes. Ms. Chair.
This budget at a glance, you know, I have to say something about that. That is such a great PR comprehensive marketing tool because it just gives you basically what you need, everything you need to know on a piece of paper that's back and forth. Is this going to be available to all of our faculty and staff members?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, that, because this is a valuable tool, because you don't have to go through forty-five pages, correct, of anything or get any misinformation. It's all here for you, so I want to thank you for that. That's perfect.
So we will make this available.
It will be going out actually in the next five minutes.
Next five minutes.
And will also be placed on the website in the next five minutes.
Next five minutes. Ms. Gore, why am I not shocked? Why am I not shocked? Thank you.
Our next presentation is Update Business Operations Financial Report.
Dr. Michael Thornton, our interim chief financial officer.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes, Dr. Mason, Dr. Banks Gray, school board members, good evening. I must admit that I'm feeling kind of anticlimactic here. Dr. Haynes, you did a fantastic job, sir, so you've done something that I haven't experienced before. I'm kind of, as Ashley said, how you going to follow that? But nonetheless, agenda item four point zero two is the school board's monthly financial report for the month ending January 2024. Actual revenues total one hundred thirty-one point three million, representing approximately forty-six percent of budget revenues. Year-to-date expenditures, January thirty, 2024, total one hundred sixty-three thou, sixty-three million point five, representing fifty-four percent of budgeted expenditures. Certainly, we will continue to monitor revenues and expenditures and compare it to budgeted revenues and expenditures throughout the year and make adjustments as necessary, as well as we are beginning to prepare for the submission of the March thirty-one ADM, which will make the final determination for state funding, so we will certainly keep the board abreast of that as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much.
That concludes reports from the superintendent.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving along to item number five on the agenda, deliberation. We have five point zero one, 2024, 2025 proposed student fees. Five point zero two, Special Education Advisory Committee, known as SEAC. Five point zero three, Review of School Board Policy GBEB, Reports of Certain Acts to School Authorities. Five point zero four, Review of School Board Policy GCBDGC, Tracking of Absences for Professional Development Activities. Five point zero five, Review of School Board Policy GCC, Staff Recruiting and Hiring. Five point zero six, Review of School Board Policy GCJ, Staff Time Schedules. Five point zero seven, Review of School Board Policy GCK, Instructional Planning Periods. Five point zero eight, Review of School Board Policy GCKB, Instructional Staff Meetings. At this time, are there any questions of board members in regards to five point zero one, the proposed schedule of student fees? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is five point zero two, and I will turn that over to Dr. Haynes for comments.
Thank you, Chair Mason. Regarding agenda item five point zero one, Ms. Kimberly Judge, Director of Special Education, will introduce and provide information on two candidates nominated for chair and vice chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee, that are known as SEAC. The Special Education Advisory Committee is mandated under the Virginia Board of Education Regulations for Special Education and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. Members are appointed by the Hampton School Board and through the superintendent. The SEAC advises the board on the needs of students with disabilities within the school division. So following the nomination and introduction of these individuals, I would ask that this agenda item be moved for action.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks, school board members, and the Hampton community. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. I'd like to make a recommendation for a SEAC chairperson, Ms. Harrison, who comes to us as a parent of Bethel Bruin, and also a vice chair of Ms. Walker, who is a, an instructional assistant at Mary T. Christian Elementary School. They are advocates for students with disabilities. They're very passionate about the work that they do and lead on a daily basis to educate individuals with disabilities and their children with disabilities, and they work to promote positive interactions for students and parents and families to be collaborative together as we work to ensure the education of all of our students, but in particular our students with disabilities. As we look to reestablish our SEAC, I want to ensure that this has been a very robust membership drive and process that we started September of this school year, so September of 2023. We did a membership drive at all of the schools here in Hampton City, and we had a large group of individuals that expressed some interest. We conducted some in-house internal interviews, and we found the most compatible candidates. Additionally, we still do have consistency with our teacher representative of Ms. Courtney Ferris, and then we also have myself and other consulting members that will be serving as SEAC members. I now open it up for any questions that you may have for me.
Are the two, the chair and vice chair nominees here?
Yes, sir, they are. If you would, please stand and join me, Ms. Harrison and Ms. Walker. Ms. Harrison, right here to my right, and Ms. Walker, right next to her.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from board members? All right, and so, Mr. Kilgore?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we take deliberation item five point zero two, Special Education Advisory Committee, and move it to action item six point zero nine.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore that we move the SEAC approval of the advisory committee from item five point zero two to item six point zero nine on items for action. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Fonge?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, and so now that brings us to item number six, items for action. We have six point zero one, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of February twenty-first, 2024. Six point zero two, VSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution, Virginia Ship Repair. Six point zero three, VSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution, Next Generation Storytellers. Six point zero four, Revision of School Board Policy JECA, Admission of Resident Children. Six point zero five, Revision of School Board Policy JECAA, Admission of Homeless Children. Six point zero six, Revision of School Board Policy JECB, Admission of Non-Resident Students. Six point zero seven, Revision of School Board Policy JEECC, Admission of Military Children. Six point zero eight, The Social Media Mass Suit, and six point zero nine, the approval of the SEAC recommendation of the chair and vice chair. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of action item six point oh one.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve item six point zero one, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of February twenty-first, 2024. It's been seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Fonge?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Abstain.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Remaining items on the agenda, items for action, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we take items six point zero two
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, take items 6.02 to 6.07 in a block.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve item 6.02 to 6.07 as a block. Is there any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries.
It's Mr. Chair, I move that we approve action item 6.08, uh, the school board, or I move that the school board for the City of Hampton join the social media mass action suit.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve item 6.08, that Hampton City School will join the social media mass action suit. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Kilgore. Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Fonge?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of action item 6.09, appointing a chair and vice chair to the HCS Special Education Advisory Committee.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Fonge and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the chair and vice chair, uh, approval to the Hampton City School CAC, uh, committee. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. And congratulations, did they leave already? Oh, there we are. Congratulations to you all and thank you for your service to Hampton City Schools. All right, so moving along, that brings us to item number seven, items for deliberation. First read. We have 7.01, Review of School Board Policy AA, School Division Legal Status. 7.02, Review of School Board Policy BDDD. Enough D's. Quorum. 7.03, Review of School Board Policy BDDE, Rules of Order. 7.04, Review of School Board Policy BFB, Policy Development, Evaluation, Approval, and Dissemination. 7.05, Review of School Board Policy BHD, Board Member Compensation. 7.06, Review of School Board Policy BHE, School Board Member Liability Insurance. 7.07, Review of School Board Policy BJ, School Board Memberships. 7.08, Review of School Board Policy CBB, Appointment and Term of Superintendent. 7.09, Review of School Board Policy CBD, Superintendent's Contract, Compensation, and Benefits. And all of these policies are with our board attorney, Ms. Joy Brown.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the school board. I know this looks like a lot, but I promise I will be really quick. Um, I have nine policies to present on first read this evening. All but one are five-year reviews with no recommended changes. So the only slight change is to school board policy BJ. Um, so I'm going to go directly to school board policy BJ. The reason for that review is it is a five-year review, but there is minor language change to the timeframe of the meeting. So the annual organizational meeting was in July and it is now held in January of every year. So that is the only change to that policy. Are there any questions for me?
Questions from board members?
All right.
Thank you very much. All right. All right. Item number eight, hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communication or petition. Ms. Charbonneau, do you have any? Okay. All right, Ms. Charbonneau, would you please read the protocol?
Protocol for public comment period. Citizens are invited to address the school board on a matter of public concern of both the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum or policy issues. Comments should relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speaker comments on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibit, prohibited, prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to the lis- to listen to the speakers. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at subsequent business meetings, sessions as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, first speaker tonight is Mr. Andrew Stith. Okay, well, Mr. Stith has left. All right, so we will move along. Item number nine, for information, we're hearing information, all right? And 9.01, next meeting, a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget will be held at 6:30, right back here on March the 13th and on March the 20th, here at Jones Magnet Middle School. 9.02, other items for information. I will start with our superintendent, Dr. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next Wednesday, March 13th, is our commitment to graduate event for all of our Hampton City School ninth graders. This is our annual event where the community comes together to make a commitment to ensure every member of the class of 2027 will return to the Hampton Coliseum in just over three years to walk across the stage prepared for success in careers, lifelong learning in life as they graduate, the portrait of a Hampton graduate. Thursday, March 21, March 21st, we're excited to present our project-based learning division showcase. Since the beginning of this year, students at Bethel, Hampton, Kickitane, and Phoebus participated in project-based learning to make an impact on the greater Hampton community, culminating in school-level showcases or competitions that took place in February. The top two to three teams from each school have now moved on to compete at the next level and will deliver their formal presentations during the division-wide showcase. Also on March 21st, we will come together and celebrate our great educators at our annual Teacher of the Year banquet. This is always a spectacular event. Lastly, we have some guests in attendance this evening to view the budget presentation. We currently have another cohort of Hampton City Schools teachers who are working on their administrative degrees, and they were asked to attend this evening's presentation as an assignment for the finance course they're currently taking. At this time, I would ask that members of the leadership cohort stand and be recognized. That concludes the information from the superintendent, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. I was wondering why that group was still here. You have to stay till the end to get a grade, huh? All right. Any, uh, other items for information from board members?
Chairman, uh, Mason, just one question. Uh, March is National, um, Social Work Month. As such, I would like to recognize Dr. Copeland and his staff, the work that they do to support Hampton City Schools.
Yes, yes, definitely. All right, anyone else? Mr. Jackson, anything?
We good, all right. Uh, I did have one thing that I did want to talk about, uh, and just put on the ears of the school board. As we are aware, we are about three months away from high school graduations. The class of 2024 has worked extremely hard throughout their years of, uh, primary school and secondary school to be able to do everything that they have and be able to do the things that they are doing as they go on to the next stages of their life. With that being said, we know that at every graduation for all four of our high schools, we've recognized a valedictorian and a salutatorian. I specifically want to focus on the title of valedictorian. The valedictorian is the number one position in terms of academic achievement at any high school. It not only shows hard work, but opportunity. I want to talk specifically about the title of valedictorian today because I was having a conversation with someone who I know was a former valedictorian, and we were talking about transfers and transferring from one school to another and how that can affect the valedictorian race. Uh, there are a lot of students that are in Hampton City Schools that have lived here in the City of Hampton for their whole life. They've gone to Hampton City Schools their whole life. They've worked hard throughout Hampton City Schools their whole life. And they work hard to be able to get the title of valedictorian. With that being said, I acknowledge that students who transfer here are also now a part of Hampton City Schools and are also a part of the Hampton City Schools family. This being said, I also recognize that in certain schools' divisions, well, not certain, in other school divisions, there are different classes that they're able to take that are able to better benefit their GPAs and help them to achieve that higher standing when it comes to GPA for the title of valedictorian. I say this to say that, you know, like I said, it, it's, it's a symbol of hard work. And when you have transferring students who are coming in and, you know, they're having higher GPAs, not because they just, not only because they worked hard, but sometimes because of the opportunities that they've had in other districts. And you're having students who have been here their whole time now becoming number two or number three because of things that they couldn't control, things that even though they still worked hard for, because other people are coming in with better opportunities, frankly, they're now losing their spots. And I'm not saying that this is a testament of, oh, anybody taking any spots or anybody proving that, oh, hard work is this thing. What I am asking for, though, is when it comes to our classes that, you know, give higher credits, I ask that we consider that we hire more teachers who are qualified to do things like dual enrollment and AP, not only to help homegrown valedictorians, but also to give students the opportunity to, to be exposed to different levels of classes, to be exposed to more high school level classes, so that, like I said, we not only provide those transfer students with an opportunity to do the same semblance of work that they were doing at their other schools, but allow our own Hampton City Schools graduates and our own Hampton City Schools students to be able to be exposed to more things. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, other comments from board members? Any other items for information? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.